Study is necessary that there should be a broader outreach to the business community as well as all the affected residents. A stakeholders work group, I think would be appropriate to try to come up with some solutions to some of the concerns. But you know, just adopting the ordinance as it is, and you know, unfortunately, I think it's going to be, you know, a recipe for for further dispute. And we're trying to avoid that for both the benefit of the township and my clients. Certainly, if you have any specific questions about the information that was provided in my memo or in the red line. A copy of the ordinance, certainly would be happy to entertain that. But unfortunately, public comment is all I get for right now, and I think I probably just about used all my three minutes. So, thank you very much for your patience, and do appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next hand raised is Bemor, B E M O R.
Let me unmute him.
Hello. Thank you.
Can we, if we got Mr. Bemor or Ms. Bemor?
Yes, 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 it's Brian. Can you hear me?
Oh, okay, yep.
All right, thank you. Has, has my time started yet, or?
We'll start you right now. We got you on screen.
Thanks so much. Okay. So when I first started, the, the only arguments that I, that I heard that I felt had any weight was the need for aggregate. And recently, we went to Hubscherth Pit and saw that they're even expanding now logging and just making more room. So there's over a thousand acres of aggregate, ten miles away. So the few, so the, the argument that we needed it, just, just didn't, just, just after I saw that, didn't carry much weight. For you guys as trustees, I really appreciate the steps that you've taken. I feel that you, you saw potential danger in the community and you acted, you stepped in and did your job. Yeah, you did not remove the right to have a pit. All you did was add rules surrounding all of those dangers that we, that, that I was just talking about. And I feel like this is a very necessary and fair process. You potentially save some embarrassment for, for the applicant. If he had agreed to submit his application as it was written, I, I'd just like to read a section, criteria two. This, just, this is a special use. The special use shall, shall not change the essential character of the surrounding area. And it says shall not, and the applicant's response was during the active mining, there will be a change. And it doesn't mention the timeframe, which is seven to seven. And he adds some more information here explaining why. He says, however, activities that will be limited to two and a half acres, cells of mining one time. This will limit the, the exposure to that change. The closure plan of the project, which is going to take maybe twenty years, maybe longer. There is no criteria that would have told us. And for the residents that live there and for their housing property, I think it was a big issue. The closure of the, the planned project was to bring the parcel full circle back to being productive agricultural parcel. And thus will not change the essential character of the surrounding area once completed. And the once completed is my issue, like I said, twenty years. And in the fact that no one else was given any opportunity. I think we had a week before to tell everyone in the area about it that we could. And many meetings, and I did not see counsel or the applicant at most of them. So I feel like they gave up their right to, to argue that now. And finally, I would say that if we are going to do, that all they're going to do is highlight the wonderful actions you guys took to step in and protect the community from what could have been awful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, again, we have public comment right now, still open. This would be for items on the agenda. I don't see any more hands raised. I'll give it another second or two. I know it's a little clumsy with the setup sometimes. All right, I, yup, I see a public comment, Mr. Mr. Lamon has his hand up.
I just wanted to inform you Ben, that supposedly folks who are trying to watch this through YouTube are not able to live stream right now. It says it's offline, and so I'm just passing that information to you that it may not be available the, the way some people tend to view this.
Okay, thank you. See, we have a hand raised, Denise Richards.
Just a second. Unmuted Ms. Richards and I've sort of asked her to start her video.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, it's Denise Richards. I'm standing here on the edge of my property. This is the line between me and the projected pit project. I just thought it was an appropriate place to be for the meeting. Unfortunately for you guys, the beautiful sunset is not there where it belongs today, but it's Michigan. Just want to wish everybody health and safety at this weird time in our world right now. And I have four things. One is gratitude. I want to shout out to Mark and Rodney for their expertise and hard work on the ordinance. I'm grateful, but I still don't want to pit as a neighbor. Number two is perspective. Sometimes when folks live and work in only one place their entire lives and they do things one way, they're deprived of learning new and potentially more advantageous ways of doing things with that sort of limited perspective. And thanks to Mr. Nanny's outside experiences, he brings us a broad minded perspective. And he formed an ordinance with the group to meet the township's needs. It's a proactive, tested stance that updates forty year old documentation in our township. The current SUP, as you all know, is deeply flawed and unacceptable. Three is reality. Out here, the reality is dirt, dust, and really bad roads. They just plague us from being in an agricultural zone. It leaves migrating dust on our mail and our mailboxes. It leaves dust on our vehicles locked safely in our garages. The wind is strong with nothing in the way to block it. You can see if it wasn't snowing all the way. In the winter time, the roads causing, the wind in the drifts caused Lincoln Road to completely get blocked. So if you imagine that much dust in the spring and summer with dozens of trucks and extraction equipment, and that brings road destruction, safety hazards, health risks to all of us, all the things that we've discussed now for months and months. The fourth and final thing is that I want to encourage all of you on the board of trustees to be leaders. We out here in the field, we're counting on you to be brave, to stand up for what you know is right, to remember who you are, what your purpose is, and what your obligations are. So I'll just leave you with this mantra, never ever give in to the bullies, always look for the helpers. And thank you so much, all of you, for all of your hard work. Thanks. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eighty-four tenths of a second over Denise. So we have a request from Jim Zalid. Apparently, he has difficulty with the hand raising thing on his line. So we're going to open the floor to Jim Zalid right now for a public comment.
Okay, let me find him so I can unmute him. Jennifer, do you see Mr. Zalid on the list? Oh, here he is. Just unmuted, and I've asked him to start his video.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Yeah, for whatever reason, my little hand icon didn't appear today, so it did last time. So anyway, my name is Jim Zalid. I live at six, four, two, two, South Whiteville Road. I want to first thank the board for the revisions to the proposed extraction ordinance made since the second reading of the last meeting. To clear up some of the problems with the original version, adding exemptions for agriculture, temporary borrow pit, and filth road and utility construction projects, and the collection of recycling of asphalt and concrete. However, a major requirement of placing the extraction operation on a paved road, which was discussed at the last meeting, has been left unchanged. Because the Isabella County Road Commission is legal jurisdiction for the road, I strongly feel this requirement should be removed and provided for the road commission to determine what requirements will be needed. At over one million dollars to reconstruct a mile of county road, this is a costly requirement. To further add insult to injury, after improving the road to the proposed site, we will only be given a permit for three years with an opportunity to renew. And ask the board how many other projects in the township requiring such an investment could be terminated after three years? My guess is the answer is none. At the last meeting, it was stated the new ordinance would provide a clear path to opening an extraction operation instead of the current special use permit process. Nothing could be farther from the truth, as the new rules will require an additional cost of six hundred and fifty thousand to one and a half million dollars for studies, monitoring wells, and road construction. The wide range of this, due to the unreasonable discretion given to the administration to determine the requirements, which with little limits or recourse to their decisions. Given the obvious intent of the administration to stop us from opening our sand pit, I can only assume the number will be closer to the upper end of the estimate. An additional twenty to thirty thousand dollars in annual costs for reports, insurance, and financial guarantees are on top of the initial investment. There are many, many more concerns I have, but I'm limited to a three minute monologue. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zalid. And we still have public comment. This would be items on this agenda. Looking for hands raised. I'll wait another fifteen, twenty seconds here before we close it down. All right, seeing no more hands raised, we closed public comments and we moved to item eight on the agenda, which is reports and board comments. Let's see, do we have any questions on the April monthly report? All right, and so we moved to item C, the Planning Commission's ZBA updates by the Community and Economic Development Coordinator.
Thank you very much. The, it's a short report. The zoning board of appeals did not meet this month. We didn't have any applications for May, so at this point, there will not be a May meeting for the zoning board of appeals. The planning commission elected to, to cancel their meeting for April. We are looking at, at having a meeting in May, but the chair decided to, to cancel the April meeting. So at this point, we're moving ahead with getting ready for, for May. That's the extent of activity with regards to the planning commission's zoning board of appeals. The planning commission is continuing individually to review the, the updated drafts of the ordinance book. And looking ahead to getting started on the discussion about that.
Rodney, I got a question for you. The planning commission, did they, were they just uncomfortable with the video format that we're going using right now, our virtual meeting? Or what was the reasoning for canceling?
Well, we had a concern about having a quorum. We were having trouble getting, getting firm word from commissioners that they were able to use the, the format. It came down to the point where we had to make a decision to move ahead or not. And the chair decided to cancel rather than taking a chance on not being able to have a quorum via technology. We also spoke with, we have, we have two applicants that were on the agenda, and we spoke with both of them, and they were comfortable moving on to May. In fact, one of them would prefer not to have the meeting by technology. So they were both comfortable with moving ahead to May.
Well, I don't know about the technology thing. I think better get comfortable with what we're doing right now.
Well, they have, the, the one that's not comfortable has a nephew, and they were going to bring a nephew in to help him out.
Okay, okay, good. Because I don't know if this is changing anytime soon. All right, see any more questions for Rodney at all? Okay, seeing none. We moved to item nine, consent agenda.
You forgot board member reports, if there's any.
Oh, okay, board member reports. I figured nobody was seeing it was any meetings, but. Do you have any reports at all, Lisa? Your volume isn't working, Lisa. Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Maybe call in like Tim.
Last time she didn't have her volume turned up, if I recall, this time issue. So I'm just wondering, Lisa, if you can hear, you can check on the bottom left. The little icon there, if your volume is up. Next to the mute icon.
I think I'm going to vote against the Microsoft Surface Pros.
Go with the iPad.
Yeah.
She actually had to go through a back door and change settings the last time.
Is it possible that Lisa, that what you, your board report, is it, is it something that can wait till our next meeting? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So any other board member reports at all?
I have none.
Okay.
This hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, Mr. Milky, yeah.
Thanks. Real brief, and I'm not sure this is the appropriate spot, but I didn't want to wait until final board comment. Because we have an audience now, and I wanted to give recognition to our assessor, Pat De Priest. She's recently announced her retirement, and she's put a lot of good years in our township, and I just want to give her a pat on the back and wish her all the best.
I agree.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, Brian. Very appropriate.
Well done, Pat De Priest.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, any more board reports at all? All right, let's move on to consent agenda.
Can you hear me now? I hear you.
Oh, we just lost you.
No, I hear her.
There you go. Maybe get closer to your computer. Maybe you can barely hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Like, there you go.
Do you want me to do my report then? I watched the city meeting.
Sure, yeah.
It, they did for the April thirteenth meeting, they did a video. They did a presentation on the 2020 census. They sent out letters to the students, over fifty percent of a response rate. So far, the response rate for overall Union Township's forty-one point three percent. The city is forty-five point eight. Isabella County is forty-five point eight. And Michigan is fifty-four point seven. Received their 2020, 2026 improvement plan, set a public hearing for May. And their pickup on April twenty-seventh, at this time, they're working on setting up a second date for people that have landscaping businesses unable to break leaves due to the state at home order. So making another date for that.
All right, very good. Got it in. Well done. All right, moving into consent agenda. We would need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Our motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion support, motion Cody, support Rice. Who is checking the payables this, this week?
I did. Everything looks good.
All right. In the ordinance enforcement in the global ends report, I had a question. It showed that there was two blighted properties where we are presenting a cleanup presentation or, or something, Mark, can you? Is that, is that the properties on Pickard and Billbrow that I'm thinking of?
What, I'm sorry, where are you, Ben?
It's in the global ends and. And it's.
Item F?
Ordinance, ordinance enforcement towards the end.
Is it the monthly report or?
Monthly, yes, the monthly report. It's the ordinance enforcement section. It talks about two blighted properties. I was just questioning whether those were the properties on Pickard and Billbrow.
Doesn't it say East Valley Road?
Or my? No, that's a different one.
Are you on page five of the agenda?
I'm just going from what I wrote down on my, let me see. It's page eight of the global ends. So it'd be what, I've got page thirteen. And it's under ordinance enforcement activities. It says preparation of a request for proposals to clean up of two blighted properties for which the township previously received court authorization to proceed.
That's in the monthly activity report.
Right, yeah.
Yes, that is the. Those are the Bradwood properties.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's what, so that we're, we're at that point then.
We were until we kind of shut down. We have, we have authorization from the court. And we were in the process of, or putting together a request for proposal to have somebody do the work. And then everything kind of stopped. We're still working on it, I believe, but you know, it's just much harder to move on things right now.
Oh, certainly. Yeah, we had Melissa Schaefer, obviously, it's, you know, been working on that for years because it's in her backyard. So she came in during board review and was questioning the status of that. And so it's nice to see we're, we're through enough hoops to get to that point. That's, that's going to be two really nice properties to, to take care of for the neighbors, but also, you know, just, just to clean up from an environmental standpoint. So I'm glad to see that.
And that contract would, assuming, I mean, and I'm assuming it'll meet the threshold. That contract to do that work will be in front of the board of trustees before we initiate that. I'm assuming the amount will be sufficient.
Yeah. All right, good work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any more questions at all? Or Mr. Milky?
Just one on the minutes, board agenda, item A, which was the ICRC gravel roads. And the, the motion as recorded in the minutes just says four miles, and I thought we identified those, and I just thought it might be helpful to include those specifically in the minutes. Is that? What others remember? So this would be page nineteen of your packet?
Yeah, okay, got there. Yeah, you're saying that you'd like to have the roads listed in the.
We specifically listed those, and it seemed like that ought to be part of the record.
Yeah, we had them listed in the last meeting.
Yes.
That was the only thing I had.
Yes. Any more items on the consent agenda? Brian, your hand's still up? Nope, okay, it's gone. All right, so this would be, let's see, was it motion, remind me, who had the initial motion?
Me.
Lisa, and who was the second?
I was.
Okay, this is all in favor of approving the consent agenda with the addition of the gravel roads that were approved in our last meeting added into the minutes. All in favor, say aye. Oh, yeah, that's right. Now, get broke off. Yup, Lucy, you want to go ahead and run it through?
Supervisor Ganning?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Worley?
Yes.
Trustee Help?
Yes.
Trustee Lanning?
Yes.
Trustee Milky?
Yes.
Clerk Paul, yes.
All right, consent agenda is approved. Moving into our first item, a new business is going to be the approval of the public sewer utility agreement with Nottawa Township for the installation of a six inch sanitary sewer force main within the charter township of Union Rights Away.
Would you like me to lead in?
Whoever wants to lead it in, either you or Kim.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. The, so this is a utility easement agreement primarily along Mission Road from baseline south to, to the city limits. This would connect the Nottawa Township sewer, I'll call it, collection facilities to the Mount Pleasant wastewater treatment plant. This would provide the ability of Nottawa Township to provide municipal sewer services to their residents. Since it's in the right of way that goes to the township, our consent is required for them to access the right of way. And to facilitate that consent, there is a public sewer utility agreement before you tonight. Key points include Union Township will continue to retain all rights to the right of way and being able to grant other easements and those work through that right of way. Nottawa Township is responsible for all the contractors, the work that, that would be done to, to put in that, that force main, whether it has to do with original construction or maintenance down the road. Nottawa Township's required to notify the township when they want to do that work. They're also required to, I guess, joins the right word or participate in the this dig program. Down the road, the road commission or Union Township needed that main to be relocated. That just, the agreement allows for those discussions to be held. The initial term of the agreement is forty years. There is a termination clause and a renewal for an additional forty years after the first forty years passes. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on that. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
Bill?
Yeah, I just have one question. I know it says here, Nottawa Township is responsible for future relocation of the force main. What if, for instance, we decide to make Mission Road? Three lanes, turn lane in the middle and we have to go out on the road? Is that our responsibility to pay for that, to move that, being that it was? Our doing and not their doing? You understand, I mean, if we widen the road on our choice? Is that their responsibility to pay for that, or is that our responsibility?
It is. Their responsibility, this is under clause nine of the.
Yeah, I see.
And what what we say is that we're going to make every effort. To minimize the the need to do that. But if there are unforeseen conflicts that we're not aware of right now, that do come up. It would be their responsibility to relocate that.
Rusty Lanning?
Yeah, just for a little clarification, if you look under background information. On this. Information sheet here, second line. Again, just for clarification, it says within the public right right of way. Primarily along the north side of Mission Road. So Mission being a north south road. I'm thinking that should either be east or west side.
Yeah, it's the west.
Sorry about that.
Which side? Should should read the west side?
East side.
East side, okay, thank you.
My mistake, sorry about that.
That road is an old state highway, is is that under the jurisdiction of the state MDOT? Or is that under the jurisdiction of the Isabella County Road Commission?
Road Commission. It's the Isabella County Road Commission.
Okay, so the state did it over then?
Yes.
Okay.
My understanding from talking to the road commissioner, that is under their jurisdiction.
So are the easements the same as because a state road is, I think, quite a bit wider easement wise than a county road is?
In some of the areas, yes, it is large, it is larger right of way.
Okay. Any further questions at all? All right. So this would be to approve the sanitary, actually, we didn't, we haven't had a motion, have we?
I'd make a motion. To the approval of the public service utility agreement with Nottawa Township. For the installation of a six inch sanitary sewer force main within the charter township of the Union. Charter township of the Union Rights of Way.
Okay, so motion Worley, support Cody, did I get that right?
Yep.
Okay, and this would be to approve of the public sewer utility agreement with yet Nottawa Township for the installation of a six inch sanitary sewer force main. Within the charter township of Union Rights of Way. All in favor of that, and we would go to Cody for roll call.
Supervisor Ganning?
Yes.
Did you have a question, Brian?
I did, if I could.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that that's okay, I was waiting for the motion to to ask this question, but. Is there any anticipated lane closures or anything that would happen as a result of lane this along that business corridor?
I'm not aware of any right now, but that's probably something that would be determined when they actually do the construction. But at the time, they're they're quite a ways off the edge of the right of way, so. But I'm not sure at this time if that's if that's going to be happening or not.
Okay, thank you, I'm good, Ben.
Okay. Okay, before I start this again, anybody else? Okay, no hands, all right, so roll call vote?
All right, Supervisor Ganning?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Rusty Worley?
Yes.
Rusty Help?
Yes.
Rusty Lanning?
Yes.
Rusty Milky?
Yes.
Clerk, well, yes?
All right, motion carries. And the agreement is confirmed and goes to Nottawa Township. Item B. This would be the final consideration, adoption of the proposed extraction ordinance.
Thank you, Ben, the. Just to begin is a little bit of background and orientation. Going back to early January, the the Board of Trustees placed a temporary moratorium on extraction or operations given. Instructing the staff to take a look at. The situation and see if there was anything that we should do about that. We have developed. Draft. Ordinance at your March 11th meeting. The board approved. The proposed ordinance for first reading and publication, that publication occurred. At the April 8th meeting earlier this month. The board approved the second reading. requested some additional changes be made. And I'll just kind of highlight those at a at a higher level. There was concern about the intent and the scope of the proposed ordinance. There was a desire to clarify and expand the exemption section. Of the ordinance, the desire to. Improve the inspection provision provision of the ordinance. And then, as also, I think, kind of related to the intent in the scope. Wanted to limit and and make clear. What this ordinance was for, what it was not meant to be addressing. The definition of the. Of an extraction. Operation was revised to. Confirm and line up with the revisions to the. Intent and scope section. So we made those changes, there's a red line version of those particular sections in your packet. A clean copy of the entire ordinances. Also in your packet. With these. Updates of. The administration. Feels reaches an appropriate balance between various board of trustee policy goals dealing with. Safety, health and commerce, as you've articulated. And governance policies 1.3, 1.4, 1.6. And with that high level interview, I'd ask Rodney to go into a little bit more detail on those changes that were made.
Thank you, the just focusing for a moment on that that red line version, this, as as Mark said, this is all about. Confirming what this ordinance is intended to do and what it's not intended to do, this is, this is not an ordinance to regulate asphalt or concrete recycling. It's it's not an ordinance to to regulate. Land development activities associated with the site plan or digging basements or or any of those items, so. Was pleased to to be able to make these adjustments that the board asked for during your your earlier meeting this month. To to make that clear, I think section five. You see, has been, as we've added language there to 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 make it make it clear that the what the ordinance is not under those exemptions. Including expanded language agriculture, as well as related to a certain land development or building construction activities. The. The key to what this is, is really that definition of extraction operation. That is in section 23 on the on the last page of the red line document. Here again, we, the changes that you see there are intended to to simply clarify what are what the intent of the ordinance is, that we're focused specifically on. Extraction operations. And not on on incidental activities, incidental excavation or or land balancing, other activities that that are not associated. With a an extraction operation. So that's the, I think, the bottom in the definition, you'll see the last sentence has also been red lined out, that's actually been added in the exemptions, it was languages. That that we felt was better, just simply include in the exemptions that clear that address some agricultural activities. So that's been that's been merged into section five, the other item that that. That we changed in response to the board comments was related inspections, there were comments about. Making sure that if the planning commission is going to be on a site to to become familiar with a site, that's before them for for a permit approval. Excuse me. That that would be done in a more formal fashion, so we've we've made that clear, we set set it up so it would be done through a scheduled visit, group visit. With township staff present and also with with notice relay, the open meetings act. That that they're going to be on the site. So with with that, we've addressed the items that the that the board had mentioned to previous meeting. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, looking for hands? Any questions for Mr. Nanny? Brian?
I'm going to start with comments. I I think, looking at the changes that you put in this document, captured. The lengthy discussion we had at our last meeting, and for that, I'm grateful. And I do want to thank both our manager and Mr. Nanny. With all the work they've put into this, I I hope you don't feel our picking this apart and making sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. Is anything other than us working together, right? So I appreciate all the work that you've put into it. I. I really like the language, overall, I have one concern with the ordinance, and that really has to do with. The requirement for a site to be on a on a paved road, paved meaning concrete or asphalt. And we briefly discussed that last time, and I think the avenue we we spoke to in the last meeting was that. An applicant would have the right to ask for variance. And that variance could be applied for in the permitting process so that they could be exempt from that requirement if it made sense. And I've I've personally had a lot of thought on this. And Mr. Zalid actually spoke to this, I think, in his opening statement and public comment. I do have concerns that it may, that's the one item in here from my perspective that may seem prohibitive. If if you're looking at a site that's solely on dirt road that has long access to. A paved road. And I wanted to at least. Express my concern, I I don't have an answer to that other than. You know, obviously, the the roads are the jurisdiction of the county road commission. And although township pays for most of the work that's done on those dirt roads. But I I'm curious if there is a way that we can architect something that maybe. The app, if we're in a dirt road only, if the applicant and or the township and or the road commission could form an agreement that would allow. The applicant to participate in funding their portion of the damage that may be on the roads, because. Anywhere we have that, those kinds of trucks going in and out on dirt road, there is going to be degradation of of the road base. And it only makes sense that the applicant would have some ownership in fixing that. And anyway, so that was the one concern of I have left with this ordinance. As far as those that have been raised that I've thought of, so I guess I wanted to voice that.
If if I. Provide some additional information on that, glad you brought it up, would that be, would that be all right?
Absolutely.
I had the opportunity on Monday, I had some challenges getting a firm answer out of the road commission as to what their policies. Were going were were related to this topic, and on Monday, I was able to get some additional information from the road commission. Where they they, although they don't have a written policy, they they just apparently recently. Had a a pit reactivated elsewhere in the county. And as part of that, they they required that operator to enter into a road service agreement. With the county and to provide the county road commission with an escrow deposit. Funding funds that would be held on account of the road commission. And would be used at the road commission's discretion to to take care of additional maintenance that that's needed, including additional brining. And additional scraping of of a gravel gravel road. They they indicated that that this would be their intent to do with any new operation that came into the counties to require this type of service agreement. So with that in mind. With accounting taking that step, the the need for the road to be paved, which basically is our. Mechanism to minimize maintenance costs or challenges with dust. Becomes less important, and so. I I did take a look at at the ordinance section 14.1, it's on the bottom of page 23. 14.1, and thi- this is a section that requires the paving. And I still would recommend that that we require the access to be be via public roads. But at this point, with with that additional information that just came in from from the road commission in mind, I would be comfortable. With recommending or suggesting that that we could simply end that that sentence in section 14.1. At at the, it shall be limited to public roads, period, and simply deleting the rest of the sentence. And with the understanding that the road commission does retain their jurisdiction and that they are going to pursue the additional maintenance. Funds for for additional maintenance on those roads.
Mr. Milky? I think Mr. Howke actually had his hand up before then, Bill, do you want to go in first?
Don't let Brian go.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, only because it's a follow up. Mr. Nanny, thank you very much, that's that's great news, in fact, I had actually called the road commission a couple of weeks ago and asked them, and they went through the same story that you just gave. And my my only concern with that, and I guess I want to ask you this too, is the fact that township. Does take the lion's share of the liability when it comes to our dirt roads? It. Is there added protection needed that the township would need to sign off on such agreement with the county where we at least know it's being taken care of that? That if if there's residents or other businesses using those roads, they know those roads are going to be in a drivable state, that they're going to be safe. Understand what I'm getting at, does the? Some of it rests on the township, do we need to be part of that process?
Well, for that, that I'd have to defer to Eric Morris, our township attorney, because that's really more of a legal question.
It is, okay, but I I'm really excited to hear that you had that discussion, because for me, this was a a factor that could be. Make it un-un unavailable to certain sites, and as long as the road's kept in check, and you know, these trucks aren't destroying the road. And we have some assurance of that, and that that gives me a peace of mind, so thank you.
Right, Bill?
Yeah, it was suggested to me by three different excavators in the township. That. They have a joint meeting with two or three excavators, some township staff. And maybe a couple people from the general public. To smooth this thing out. Maybe. Talk about some of the fees and everything. Brian already had addressed the issue of the paved road, I had also talked to the road commission. I had also talked to the road commission, as did Rodney, we heard. I had another citizen call me and say they'd like to see all the fees from these extraction sites go to strictly roads and not to our general fund. And I thought that was a great idea. So I don't know how I feel about voting on this tonight. I don't feel comfortable with everything. I don't think we need to push it. We've got another meeting where we could have a special meeting. I think there's a lot of room for litigation and I'm worried about litigation. We already spend enough money in attorney fees and I don't want to see us spend more than we need to. Thank you.
Hey Ben?
Yes, sir.
Tim needs to call back in.
Oh, okay, yep, yep, I saw that. I'm gonna piggyback on what, what Bill had said too, is, is I've had a couple of discussions and I, everybody to me that I've talked to in, in the excavation community has all agreed that the ordinance needed to be updated. And they agree that the public needed to be protected. But what ended up coming out of this whole ordinance became less of a, of a, of an issue of monitoring and, and ensuring, but restricting. And I agree wholeheartedly. I don't want to vote for something that we're gonna end up going right to court with, which is I think what we have. I would like to see a roundtable. And I'd mentioned this before to Mr. Milky a while back. Is that I think that we should have a roundtable, we should have a representative group of each of the segments, citizens, township, board, and excavation community and try to come up with a general consensus. Then we have a good ordinance. And I'm just concerned that, that this ordinance is, is just gonna create a lot of legal fees and I, I don't want to see that happen. Anybody else like to chime in at all?
Lisa's raising her hand.
Okay, I see. Yep, oh, I'm looking over on the right-hand side. Are you using the little raised hand icon?
I can't, I'm.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Okay, Lisa?
I had the same concerns you've had about the paving of the public road. I thought that was I thought it'd be quite expensive for the for the for, uh, extraction operation to have to have paved road. It's the way the roads are, just have a little patch of paved road, I just thought it was a little extreme. I guess depending on where the road would be.
Is that it, Lisa?
Yeah, well, I would like to see some changes made, maybe, you know, a little more with the road commission, like speaking of that, have them help write it up and then come back with a specific meeting on this specific section.
Mr. Lamon?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know that my phone dropped out about as soon as Bill started speaking and I was able to dial back in and you had just finished, Ben, so I missed both of your guys' uh, reporting and thoughts.
Um, Bill, you want to give them a Reader's Digest?
I had mentioned to him that in the last couple of weeks, I've had three excavators call me and they're concerned about some of the things in this. Couple of them suggested that we have a little committee get together between two or three excavators, maybe Rodney, Mark, maybe another staff member, couple people from the general public, if maybe a board member. But that's one thing that they've had. Then I had a citizen call me and say that he'd like to see all of the fees generated from these extraction sites used strictly for road repairs and not go to the general fund. Those were my comments too.
Thanks, Bill, appreciate it.
Yeah, and, and Tim, I basically concurred with a lot of things that, that Bill had said. I'd also had several discussions and that was the general consensus was that you know, all the excavating community agrees that the ordinance needed to be updated. It's just that they would like to have, have had an opportunity since it affects them and their business and how they are able to generate their own livelihoods is that they should have at least a voice in how the document's prepared and maybe with a consortium of representation of, of, of township citizens and that community and the road commission, I would think, is that a better document is created. Because I'm just concerned that this is gonna go the wrong direction unless, unless everybody's on the same page.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other hands? Uh, Brian?
Um, I definitely hear what you're saying. You know, I, I think we have tried to make it clear that we want input. We've received a lot of input from attorney representing a, a large handful of extraction operators. And I don't think they've, they haven't had, they haven't been shut out of the process. I mean, we, we have spent a lot of time looking at that. If, if the board would like to do a roundtable and think that would be productive with our staff, I mean, I certainly could be supportive of that. But I, I don't want to give the impression that, that none of the board here, nor our staff has not listened to the, the large amount of input we've gotten, both from residents and from extraction operators. And I, and I think we've taken some great strides in the last few meetings in improving this document and I thought it was pretty good to start with. I mean, our goal here is, is to have, if you look at the SUP process that we have currently, is negligent of our township. And this allows the township to make sure that we're ensuring the safety of our water, we're ensuring the safety of our roads, we're ensuring the, the the property values of neighboring properties. I, I mean, there's, there's a lot good here and we could spend the next year making it as perfect as possible. And there comes a, a point of diminishing returns on that. And with a lot of the changes we've seen, I'm pretty supportive of this. If, if this board would like to have kind of a roundtable thing, I, I'm not gonna oppose that because anytime we have additional input, that's good. I just, I want to make sure we're not getting to a point of diminishing return on input. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands raised?
Lisa's raising.
Lisa, yep.
I have no idea what anybody just said. I kept, I don't know if he could have seen me or not, but I got, I don't know. I got ejected from the meeting like three times. I don't, I don't, after I spoke, it was gone from there.
Was it just me, Lisa?
I think so.
I, I'll summarize very briefly, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, ve- very briefly, I just said that I, I don't want the impression that we haven't taken input from extraction operators. We've taken a lot of input directly from them and from their attorney. It just hasn't been in a roundtable format and my fear is that we could nickel and dime and, and whittle away at this for a year until we felt it was perfect and everybody's happy, perfectly happy. And I'm not opposed to a roundtable idea, but I want to make sure that this doesn't continue forever. You know, there's a point of diminishing return on actually getting input that's productive. Is that helpful?
Yeah. Can I comment on that? Is that okay?
What's that?
Can I comment?
Sure, I'll have you and then Norm.
Okay, I, I mean, I really just would at all, I mean, I, I think we should work with road commission to come up with some verbiage for this, for some language. Point one, instead of taking it out because I don't want to leave it open and, you know. I, I want it. I want to work with road commission on it.
Um, see, Norm would be up next.
I would support what Brian is saying, trust me, Milky is saying. You know, I, I think if you go over this, you know, so many times, eventually you do get to a point of diminishing return. What we all agreed to is that we do feel, everyone at the last meeting, we all feel that this is a pretty solid document, well-written, thoughtful and protective of township, of both township, residents and the, the excavator. The, the suggestions last week, we were certainly listening to what the, were some of the concerns of the developers and the excavators. And those concerns were remedied in, in terms of the, the updated document. I do agree with Brian, my concern was, you know, having to pave that, the, the road going to the access site. I think that that would be prohibitive, it would be expensive, and I think that, that is counterproductive to what the developer needs to do. So being that what Rodney has spoken about in, in the conversation with road commission, I can see that now can be remedied as well to the document. I'm just concerned that, you know, the longer we go on with this, the more we keep on shredding it. We finally start these things over. And we, we've all said it's a good document with certain exceptions. And the exceptions that we spoke about last meeting have now all been addressed, especially now the paved road access to the site. So I'm not sure, you know, what more will be accomplished, other than perhaps getting to the point where we shred this thing and start from scratch. And I don't think it would be, would be helpful at all for, for anyone, for that matter. So I, I I, I think that there's ways to, you know, we've had a lot of input from folks. We have certainly listened to the excavators individually, outside of these meetings, bringing that information in. And I think we've, we've done our due diligence as elected officials who's a constituent, which is a resident and what you're doing.
Hey Norm, I'm gonna stop you right there because you're, you're, you're kind of in and out. Maybe you need to get a little closer to your, your device, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Is this better now?
That's better, yes.
Okay, yeah. This is hard to get used to this whole format. So I just think that, you know, at this point, we, we have a good document. You know, I'm not sure, we, we have all, we have all come in with ideas and we have spoken on behalf of the residents. We all had those individual conversations. So my sense is, is that we have done our due diligence as elected officials. To make sure that we're representing our constituents and their needs and I think we've done that. So, you know, I guess we could slice and dice this till death do us part, but the, I'm not sure what the benefit would be. I think there would be a diminishing return. I would agree with what trust me, Milky.
Uh, Mr. Milky?
Yeah, I mean, I, I myself would not, not like to move this forward tonight. Because I, I, I still have questions. I, I think a lot of the issues that we've addressed have been addressed. But I do have, you know, we've, we've had some questions put before us from some of the excavators' representation. And I would like to get responses, at, at least have an opportunity to ask the township attorney some questions regarding some of those issues that were raised. And so I would certainly like to have that opportunity before we were to move forward on this.
Smear Houk, yep.
Me?
Yep, yep, yep.
I just think if we push this through tonight, Eric Morris is gonna have a lot more time spent on this than he should have. And we already have spent enough money on legal defense of this. We're gonna wind up spending a lot more if we pass this tonight. Thank you.
Uh, Norm?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that. I, I'm, I think that the holdoff, we have, you know, we could do this at the next meeting. We kind of had discussed that at the last meeting that we would again be discussing this tonight and perhaps we had until the thirteenth of May or whatever the next day was for us to make our, our final decision. So I'm comfortable with that because I think the whole board needs to be comfortable with the decision and we want to make sure that we're doing it right. I do think that perhaps that we would have a closed session with the attorney. Because I do think that there's questions that we all have and we'd like to have those answered, maybe prior to the next meeting. So maybe we could have a special meeting with, with the closed session. So we have those questions taken care of for us and then we can move forward on the thirteenth. And hopefully then at that point, people can all feel comfortable to vote however they want to vote, if they feel comfortable making a vote at that time. So I think I'm hearing the consensus with everyone and we want to wait with a vote until the next meeting and maybe in between to perhaps at least to have a chance in the, in the later session. Is that what I'm hearing from folks?
I think it'd be very difficult to vote on this because we already had one change that we were documenting and we haven't seen the final version of that yet.
Correct.
Right? And so I think that's important. I still don't see what the problem is with communicating. I just think that, to me, that's been the, the one absence in this whole document was collaboration. And I don't know why there was a resistance to that because it doesn't seem like there's resistance from the excavation community about, about communication. We've had all kinds of communication from the public, which we really appreciate. But most of the communication from the excavation community really was limited to Jim Zalid because originally it was just his project. And a lot of these people really weren't aware of it until as it moved forward. And I, I just think that we can save the, everybody, everybody, a lot of time and trouble. If, if we just sat down and hashed some things out, then you've got a good ordinance that, that everybody's happy with. As opposed to trying to make, I mean, we don't know that industry. I don't know that industry. I know golf. Right? I know how to dip ice cream. Bill knows how to, how to, how to paint. He knows how to bid it. You know, and, and, and so, you know, we have expertise in those areas, but I certainly don't know anything about the excavation community. And I don't think really many of us do that are here except for, you know, one person that I know here is Jim Zalid that I see on the screen. And I just think that I don't understand the resistance to collaboration and communication. And that's, that's where I'm at and that's why I'm very hesitant. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Bill, yep.
I don't know how to push the thing. I can't get that thing on today. I'm not into technology that much. Should we put a timeline on this? Our next meeting is what, May thirteenth? We, maybe March, should we have something done on this, like within the next week and a half? Or is there a possibility that we could maybe get that roundtable of people together? A member of the road commission, couple excavators, Rodney, Mark, you know, a couple citizens. I mean, I know Ms. Denise Richards, she had some concerns. I'm not sure who the citizens would be, but I think we should have a couple of citizens involved.
And we can always extend the moratorium, so we're not, we don't have a gun to our heads here. And at this point in time, you know, the season is already underway for, and I don't even know if it's even possible if, if, if they were able to get approval that they'd be able to do anything this year or not. I, I just don't see why, why we're under the gun on this and I'd much rather have a, a And I'd much rather have a, a document that can stand up over time, um, limit trips to the ZBA for text interpretations, um, and be a document that, that makes everybody comfortable. Uh, Mr. Lannan?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, my position at this point in time is, uh, this is probably one of the most complete ordinances that I've seen developed since my time on the, uh, Township Board. I, I do think it's been, uh, fruitful in the sense that we've had a lot of input from, uh, folks who this will directly affect from a business perspective, and those that it will directly affect as a resident. And, um, a lot of information has gone back and forth, concerns, um, major, uh, input in sending along, uh, changes, ideas, uh, language, changes and, um, additions, and really, uh, help us think about things. I, I do agree that, uh, the, uh, paving of the public road that it goes onto certainly, um, could, uh, end as Rodney said, you know, simply a public road without identifying it as paved. I think it's very smart to identify that these are county roads, and the county commission should have their input. Um, at this point in time, I, I don't think it would be, uh, a time to vote on this, because there has been some, uh, language adjustments that I think need to be put in. Uh, I, I think our staff has done a fantastic job, I think the community, uh, has done a great job, both the residents and the, uh, excavation folks. Um, I, I, I don't see that, um, we would gain much juice out of bringing a group of people together for the, uh, group that has been maybe suggested to roundtable and tear up the, uh, ordinance again, and grind it up and spit it out, and put it back together. I think, uh, a lot of work has been done. I do believe that, yes, there will be legal challenges, uh, regardless of how this ends up in, uh, writing, so. I, I'm at the point where I think we need to, uh, implement what we've spoken about in language, have a chance for the board to review it, and potentially take a vote on that rewrite or that mod, slight modification. Thanks.
All right, any other hands raised? Lisa?
I'll make a motion that we postpone the consideration and adoption of the extraction order to our next meeting.
I'll support that.
Motion support, when is our, uh, moratorium date, uh, expiring, isn't it May thirteenth, or is it afterwards?
May thirteenth.
We need to extend that now, or do we wanna wait until, kinda puts a lot of pressure on the thirteenth, doesn't it?
I wouldn't recommend you extend it now, just because I'm not sure we've given it enough thought, you can always extend it on the thirteenth.
Okay. All right.
The moratorium extension isn't on your agenda tonight anyways.
Okay. Uh, Bill?
So, I don't know if we have a consensus that we shouldn't have like a roundtable discussion with these guys. I mean, they've had a lot of suggestions, um, I know, I don't know, I think the Road Commission should be involved in it, like you said, Ben, I just don't think it'd hurt to get some more language together, where everybody's settled, and then we don't wind up having any more time into Eric going to court, or their lawyers going to court. The more we can stay out of litigation, the better. I mean, we're already spending money tonight on lawyers.
Brian?
Uh, I, I, I think this is related to the motion on the floor to a certain degree, the motion was to table this, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
To table, uh, uh, voting on this particular ordinance. Um, related to that, I think, um, is, I do still have questions that I would like to be able to address our attorney with. Um, and if we were to table this until the next meeting, I guess I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to have that discussion with representation prior to our next scheduled meeting. Um, and, I mean, I, I, I need that before I'm gonna take a vote. Um, so I guess, I guess that's my two cents regarding that.
So we do have a motion and a second on the board, on the, uh, on the table, so.
Do we wanna hold a, a special meeting before then, we can have one the week before? Or just this item?
That was my thought, is that we, we post a special meeting. I mean, we, we've put a lot of work into this, and, uh, I wanna make sure we, we do it right, the best we can. Um, and, and so I want every opportunity we can to work on it. So, I, I would be happy to have a, an additional meeting before our May thirteenth scheduled meeting.
Uh, Trustee Lannan?
Yeah, I just wanna be clear with the motion, if, um, there is a motion in the passes regarding table in this meeting, that, uh, the intent would be to have this come up as an agenda item, similar how it is written today on our agenda for the May thirteenth meeting.
Yeah, with the, you know, the changes that we discussed, or. Yeah.
Treasure Rice?
Okay.
Um, I just was going to, um, piggyback what I was, what I was gonna actually suggest as, as a special meeting before, um, our, um, May thirteenth meeting. That way we can, um, discuss these, both with the lawyer and, um, just in general, um, specifically to this, um, so that we can, um, I guess figure out the, the, the answers to the questions that we had tonight. So, um, that's why my hand was raised before, so.
And just remind everybody that we do have kind of those odd situations where we have that extra week buffer. Um, this is a three-week span. Um, I, again, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna beat my head against the wall, probably trying to push this through, is, is I would really, really encourage that we create and allow dialogue, and you know, the township's going through, residents are going through enough right now. Um, and it doesn't take very long to rack up thousands and thousands and thousands of, of, of legal bills. And I think we can, if we, if we simply had open dialogue, or at a roundtable, and some of the issues were brought forward, some of the real contentious issues, I mean, you know, I mean, this is how worst are you guys? Is, is when people don't communicate, and countries don't communicate. Is that we could simply avoid a lot of unnecessary situations if we just simply listen. And I think that's really, everything I get from the, the, the excavating community i- is just simply that opportunity. And I think they deserve it. I mean, you know, this is their livelihood, again. So, I just think that there needs to be open dialogue.
May I jump in?
Yes.
Um, I, I, I'm not opposed to the idea that you and, uh, Bill presented. I just, I wanna make sure if we were to do that, that it be a productive process, right? And, and maybe, maybe here's a suggestion. Um, what if we were to get an opportunity to ask our questions of our attorney in the very near term? And then from that, um, uh, we may be able to better decide. In other words, let's say we had a special meeting next week, we had an opportunity to talk to our attorney, uh, and then we could add to that agenda the decision of whether or not to open up additional roundtable. Um, because I think we'll, a lot of us will have a lot better feeling, um, of the questions we haven't been able to get answered. Because I, I think a lot of our questions are just making sure that everything in here is, is above board as far as legality. And we wanna be assured of that. Um, and maybe that's the time we could a- address that. Thoughts?
I don't know what you said, I was voted out again.
All, all I was suggesting that is, it, can you hear me now, Lisa? Is that, uh, if, if we were able to talk to our attorney shorter, in short order, we could decide at that public meeting, um, in open session, whether or not we wanna direct staff to, uh, get additional input. Because I, I think we may learn from our discussion with our attorney if we feel the need for that or not.
Um, there is a a ZBA meeting scheduled for the Wednesday prior to the orgy, so I don't didn't do it on Wednesday before.
Tim has his hand up, Ben.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Tim.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I guess my recommendation in regards to, if a roundtable-type meeting is determined to take place, that it, uh, only be limited, uh, not by the number of people who could attend, I think it should be open to anyone who wanted to attend, as long as they are a resident of the township, uh, or are conducting business, not conducting, but have a business in the township. Uh, other than the representation of probably at least three attorneys that would be representing some of those folks that would meet that requirement.
I guess the question is how, how we do that.
But, but I, but I don't think it should be limited to.
Yeah, I, I, I see what you're saying, I, I, I can agree with that.
Can I have a couple minutes here?
Sure, yes.
The, uh, I'm just gonna, I know you're, you, you have a motion on the table, and a first and a second, and, and that is to, uh, table this item until the meeting on the thirteenth. And just as, to, to make sure we're, we're kinda focused, um. I do appreciate the comments that have been made by several people, that, uh, there has been a fair amount of, uh, public input. You all represent different constituencies and groups of the public, that you're, you're all bringing their insights to the table. The, um, it would be our intent to work on the language in the road section based on what we've heard here tonight, and what we learned, uh, earlier this week. I do hear, and I don't know if we use these terms interchangeably or not, but this is an ordinance that has to do with, uh, extraction. It does not have to do with excavation. And so I just wanna point that, point that out, there is a difference between that. This, this ordinance is not regulating, regulating excavating, excavating operations, it's regulating extraction operations. Also, regarding the, the special meeting, uh, I think that there are some points where it feels like there is some consensus, and others maybe you're still working towards it. But it does feel like there's some consensus that you would wanna have a special meeting. As part of that special meeting, there would be a closed session. That special meeting is, is a regular meeting, if you will, it's an, it's an open meeting. There's an opportunity, just like tonight, for you all to vote to go into closed session. Whether, you know, you do that or not, but you, you, you wouldn't be, uh, scheduling a quote-unquote "special" meeting for the purpose of closed session. Okay, you, 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 your meeting that's originally scheduled is, is an open, public meeting. You can vote during that meeting to go into closed session. Uh, that special meeting would allow for additional public input, because during that special meeting, there would be public comment, comment, period. I've heard a little bit about litigation. One of the, uh, one of the things we have here is, we, we have an ordinance that is sourced in the nineteen nineties, early nineteen nineties. It's two decades at least old. Uh, moving from that to anything more current, uh, I would argue brings with it litigation risk by definition. So, um, so, so you need to recognize that, it, it's such a leap from nineteen ninety to, to what we're trying to do now. That there's gonna be litigation risk, no matter what you do. I'd argue that there's even litigation risk if you just throw it all away and you go back to the original ordinance. Uh, because you've got, you've got more than one stakeholder. The, and, and I know you're working towards consensus on this roundtable. Uh, but I heard a couple comments where somebody thought it would be a good idea to have attorneys represented there, and I, I, I can't recommend strongly enough against something like that. So, I, uh, want to take that opportunity for those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Um, next Wednesday is the twenty ninth. And so, is there any conflicts at all with, uh, twenty ninth at all? First, the filing Wednesday would be ZBA, correct?
The, these, May zoning appeals meeting will be canceled, there's no items.
No items, okay, so.
I would rather do something as soon as possible.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's what I was thinking too. So you're thinking the twenty ninth, Brian?
That would be great, do we not have the, um, we were supposed to originally meet at the Commission on Aging? Which I figure is not happening for the Planning Commission zoning.
Yeah, the joint vote meeting.
Right, so, again, allow me, on the twenty ninth, right now, there's a special, not special, a joint meeting scheduled, the annual joint meeting, we plan on canceling that. There is also in the works a, a virtual pub, a virtual open house related to the zoning rewrite. That, we had some discussion as recently as this morning on that, I, I, I don't, I can't tell you as we sit here right now whether we're gonna be canceling that or, or not, so I'd stay away from the, from the twenty ninth. You could have a closed session tonight if you wanted. If you wanted to do it that soon, um, you can have it tonight. Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, for the last two meetings, we've had our attorney present, and I haven't heard him say anything. I just would like to know, Eric, do you?
And I haven't heard him say anything. I just would like to know, Eric, do you have anything to say about any of this? I mean, what would you think of a getting everybody together without attorneys? I don't think we need attorneys at this. I mean, it's just something to hash out between the community. I just, I don't know. I just wondered if Eric's got anything to say. Like I said, and maybe I get a little upset here, but he's been here for two meetings and hasn't said a word. So why are we paying?
So we do have a motion on the table to postpone the the decision on the ordinance. We left it open on that as far as you said, the next meeting, we could amend the motion to include a special meeting with a date to meet with our attorney in a closed session. And at that point in time, as Trustee Milky had mentioned, was the idea of having it on the agenda as a possible roundtable. Where we could discuss maybe the makeup of of that roundtable if we decided to do it, right? So I guess what I would need to hear is is we either have to have a call to question at this point in time on the original amendment motion, or we need to have an amendment on the motion.
I'll withdraw my motion and you can make it how you want.
Okay. So the motion is withdrawn, so we'd need to have a new motion. Trustee Lannon?
I'd make a motion, go into closed session and discuss the extraction ordinance with our attorney. There's probably some appropriate language that I should be following to make it official, but I don't have that in front of me because I'm using my phone and it'd be on my phone. But that is the gist of what I'm saying, like in accordance with section eight of whatever the verbiage would be. If anybody has that ability to help me out with the language.
I I'm gonna, you're making the motion, but I'll relay you some language, okay?
Thank you.
I I hear that you're moving that the board meeting closed session under section eight H of the Open Meetings Act, consider written material from the township's attorney that is exempt from disclosure by section thirteen one G of the Freedom of Information Act. Is that what you're referring to?
Thank you, Brian. Yes, I will take your language as I think we're all together and it could be very appropriate. And if anybody would care to second.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, motion Lannon. Second Milky?
I guess I'm not opposed to that. I I'm not as prepared as I would like to be for the opportunity. I may, if we, if we chose to do this as a board, I may still need to do this later because I'll I'm not fully prepared.
Yes, Lisa?
I don't feel comfortable doing it right now. My computer keeps freezing and I'm missing half of everything. I'm only getting in some of this conversation.
Nope, you're good, Lisa. We hear you.
I'm, I'm going to concur with with Brian. I I would much rather go into this with another chance to read everything through in a fresh mind, but pushing nine o'clock in front of a computer on a hard stool. I I don't know what my attention span is going to be. So I would prefer to delay this if we can.
My only concern is that we make sure we have the opportunity to do that in short order.
Yeah. Trustee Worley?
Yeah, I think tonight I am pretty exhausted too, and I think this would just go on forever. I'd rather be fresh and have my ideas, what I want to be asking. I like what Brian was suggesting originally, and that was, you know, let's postpone this vote until the thirteenth. We're in agreement with that. We can always extend the moratorium if if necessary, hopefully not, but we can come to a decision on the thirteenth. And then as sooner rather than later for us as a board to meet have a a meeting prior to our thirteenth meeting, have a closed session at that time. So I think maybe what we should do is have the one, you know, I'm not ready to do that tonight, but I think we should be doing this in a more orderly way. And I think that to have our meeting on the thirteenth and then perhaps do something beforehand and sooner than better.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the table to go into closed session and a second. So unless we have an amendment on the motion, we do need to vote. Trustee Lannon?
Yeah, I had my hand up there just for a final comment, I guess, before it goes to the vote, but you know, we are all here together. We have an opportunity to hear our lawyer speak in a closed session to get some initial questions generated, maybe to position ourselves when everyone is a little more fresh and have more questions prepared, but we do have a terrific opportunity sitting in front of us. Thank you.
All right, so we do have a motion as second, so I would assume at this point we need to have somebody make a call to question. Or since I don't think we're going to have an amendment?
Supervisor Ganning? Sorry, I'm thinking. No. Trustee Worley?
I see the benefit of us at least maybe getting some initial questions out while the lawyer is here. Phil said, look, we're we're paying him while he's here. Why not utilize him? And then that does not preempt us then from still having another meeting if needed prior to our next board meeting. So I'm going to vote yes.
Trustee Hope?
No, I'm not prepared.
Trustee Lannon?
Yes.
Trustee Monkey?
For the reasons Trustee Worley just stated, I'm going to vote yes, ho- hoping that we have the opportunity later if needed.
I'm going to say no. My computer just keeps, I'm losing half of everybody's conversations and I'm afraid that I will miss the whole conversation on a lot of things. So I'm going to vote no for that reason.
Okay, so that is four three on fails the motion to go into closed session.
I'd like to make a motion that we schedule a public meeting as soon as possible to continue discussion of this. So this is also a table. I'm requesting that we table what's in front of us and have a special meeting ideally next week with this board to continue this discussion.
We want to be specific on a date. Release as possible is kind of open.
Did Jennifer send out a doodle pool? She does, that's good.
Yeah, I think we can take care of the calendar in between tomorrow and Friday.
Yeah, all right. And we just have to have respective citizens make sure that they check on the front page of our township website to get the appropriate date, correct?
And and obviously with any meeting, I said in the last meeting, if there are individuals that want to give us input on this, that they're welcome to attend and and use the opportunity.
Yep. All right, so let's see, we have a motion on the table and this would be again, repeat, Brian. I'm getting a little punchy.
I'm motioning to table the item that we're dealing with on the agenda right now, the proposed extraction ordinance. And continue that in a public meeting to be scheduled for next week and posted legally.
On the township webpage?
Yes. Whatever, whatever all the legal requirements are, make sure we meet those.
All right.
Is that clear enough?
Yeah, there you go.
Can I ask one question? As it relates to the motion, is it indicated table, is it tabled to the, to the special meeting we're talking about?
Correct, correct.
And not to the thirteenth?
Well, I I mean, who who knows where it will go with, I I guess my intent was that we have discussion on this. What I heard proposed earlier and it was dropped in a motion was to table it till the thirteenth. I would like that meeting, the special meeting, to be discussion. And being that it's a special meeting and not on our calendar, I guess I wouldn't like it to be a an action item as far as voting on it.
That's why I asked.
Yep, thank you for that clarification. So I don't know, did someone give support?
I did.
Are you okay with manying that?
Yes.
So to be, so to be clear, let me restate it then. I'm motioning that we table discussion of this ordinance until especially scheduled public meeting for next week of the Board of Trustees. And that we table until further notice, any motion to approve or deny this ordinance beyond that meeting.
Still second.
I'm not going to repeat that.
Did I muddy the waters?
It's on the record, right? So we'll push that to to Clerk Cody for roll call. Yes.
Press your right.
Yes.
Trustee Worley?
Yes.
Trustee Hope?
Yes.
Trustee Lannon?
Yes.
Trustee Monkey?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes?
Okay, so unanimous consent? All right. So that moves us into new business item C on the backside of your agenda. And this is Policy Governance two point five, Financial Condition and Activities.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for the board to evaluate the administration's compliance or the township manager's compliance with policy governance item two point five. The report
Hey, Mark, you're kind of breaking out when you turn your head like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At its highest level, the the policy states that with respect to actual ongoing financial condition and activities, the township management team shall not cause or allow the development of fiscal jeopardy or a material priority as articulated in your end document. The policies to that, I'm not going to involve those. They are part of your packet. I interpret that policy to to basically say that the management team needs to stay within the budget that's been approved by the board unless there's an emergency purpose outlined in other sections of the policy. All tax payments to other governmental entities need to be made according to state statute. Invoices paid to our vendor will be made timely. I have included in the report several pieces of data the board can use to help you gauge compliance with the report. There's a budget to actual report through the first quarter of the year. We are within budget. There are a few line items, most that might be over budget. We plan on addressing those in the budget amendment. It will be before you on July twenty second. We do have quarterly budget meetings with the department heads. Those are going on this week to about, to look at the budget as of three thirty one, the end of the first quarter. All the funds do have sufficient cash flow, which we make all our payroll, all our vendor payments, even in the COVID situation are being made. Being made timely across the board. All the tax collection distributions are made per state statute. We have not used any general fund reserves. And so based on that, I feel that we're in compliance with the policy as stated. There is an evaluation form that's part of the agenda packet that you are free to use if you want to do that and submit it back. And then we turn it back over to the board. Thank you.
All right, any discussion at all?
Thanks for your report, Mer.
Thank you, and thank the Finance Department for that.
Right, we good to move on to the next item, you guys? I got, Norm, we got your hand up, but.
I just want to say that I think our fiscal management is superb. And if there's ever been a reason to even see that, it's in this document. If you notice how so many municipalities are behind the the eight ball right now, there's layoffs, there's cutbacks in pay, they can't make expenses, they can't make payroll. And sometimes we've questioned in the past as to, you know, why we carry some of the sums that we do. And I've always said way back when was, you know, when the rainy day comes, it's reason for us to have this money available. And I'm thankful for the way that Mark and his crew is handling our finances because now it certainly shows how important it is. And it's unfortunate so many communities can't have this, but I feel we're blessed to be able to be in a financial position that we are. There's no staff cutbacks, there's no asking people to reduce their salaries. And that's pretty remarkable in this this period of time. So thank you, Mark and staff for that.
Appreciate those comments.
Well deserved.
Tim Lannon?
Thank you. Norm, you stated that very well. I'd like to echo that. I also do want to give you board members a pat on the back because I think you're the fiscal responsibility of this township also rests on decisions made by the board. I had this for final board comments, but seems appropriate that I just wanted to mention in regards to our budget, I think we could expect that state revenue sharing is probably going to be considerably reduced in the future. And so I think that weighs in and is so important that we have all done such a good job with the bud- budget. And I know there's been concerns about, oh, we we might have too much money for certain things, but we have that ten year plan in place where reserves are going to be spent down and now coupled with potential state revenue sharing situation. Just proud of all of us. Thanks.
Brian?
Thank you. Tim, I can't believe you did that. I had that for my closing board comments concern regarding revenue sharing with the current census going on during a pandemic, you know, and our student body being gone. It was nice for our clerk to report on that in her report at the beginning of the meeting, but I want to second my long term concern over this next decade for this township. We're in a great spot now, but we have to have to prepare for things to be not so rosy. And that's And uh, that should be part of our discussions moving forward. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All right, seeing now we move to item D. Uh, policy governance two point six asset protection.
Thank you. And again, this is the annual review of uh, the. Management's compliance with this particular policy two point six. At its highest level, the policy states that the township management team shall not. Allow corporate assets to be unprotected. Inadequately maintained. Or unnecessarily risked. There are several, again, sub policies to that that I won't go into. They're all in your board packet. Uh, taken as a whole, I interpret the policy to be that the township uh, board. Wants to ensure that the township has adequate theft and casualty insurance. That we uh, properly maintain equipment, infrastructure. That the organization is not exposed to claims of liability or operate without proper risk management. Considerations towards our ability to continually operate. That uh, we do our accounting and our. Manage our books according to the. Auditing standards and the, and the Gatsby standards. The township man, that the township will follow a pure procurement, procurement practice that. Ensures competitiveness and uh. Appropriate expenditure of, of the taxpayers' knowledge. And that our uh, public image. Is not in danger. Whether we fail to operate uh, in a manner that's not consistent with best practices. So that's how I interpret all these various subsections. And then again, uh, some of the data that I'll just share with you. Uh, we do have uh. We, we update the liability. Insurance policy every year. We go through a pretty extensive review of that. Removing, adding equipment, property as needed, whether rolling dock or otherwise. I've attached a copy of that uh. Insurance uh. Statement, if you will. I didn't include the whole policy. It's two hundred and fifty some pages. But there is evidence of insurance there in your packet. The vehicle. Cleanly maintained. You notice those. Famers to various dealers, vendors and auto repair shops as you're looking at. You pay a few reports throughout the year. We uh, rotate that fleet as appropriate. The board purchased a new pickup truck last year. Because our, to replace one that was getting too expensive to maintain. The new fire truck uh, was ordered and built last year. It's. It uh, is in fact in the. Over at uh, the fire department being outfitted. And we hope to have that in um. Operating within the fleet by the end of the month. And at the appropriate time later, once all this shakes out, we'll have that brought over to board meeting. So you can all, all see that. Water, wastewater, infrastructure is uh, equipment. Maintained regularly. A couple of examples of what was done in two thousand nineteen. Sixteen or so manholes were repaired and upgraded. List station number fourteen was. Uh, upgraded and rehabilitated. Water main loop was completed at Pickard and Somerton. Uh, we. Placement of well number one with well number eleven was begun. That's ongoing. Fire hydrant maintenance occurs annually. We installed some new fire hydrants. Into the inventory along Pickard last year. Computer backups are done daily. We test the integrity of those three times a year. Uh, we do IT security awareness training throughout the year. And then uh, the policy talks about investments. And so I wanted to bring to your attention that uh. The township does have an investment policy. I don't think I've ever talked to you about that since I've been here. But I did include it in your packet. It was adopted uh, some time ago. It's still reasonably current. I'm not suggesting it needs to be updated. But I did want to make sure you all were aware of it. And we do follow that. I've also included an investment report. In your packet. Again, is, is data to, to support some of what I'm talking about here. With the inventory of all the securities, they're all in CDs. Has the issuance date, the maturity date, the interest rate, that kind of thing. So you wrap all that up. I feel the administration's in compliance with that policy. Again, there's that evaluation tool that you can use.
All right, um, discussion. Uh, Brian?
Uh, yeah, quickly, um, I, I appreciated you including this investment policy. In our packet. And as I had gone through it, um, I think you answered the question. You said. At this point, all of our investments are in CDs. But as I interpreted it, and, and only read this once, um, is that. We do have an option as a township to invest in mutual funds?
We do have several other uh. Types of securities that we're allowed to invest in for the policy. And what we are invested in.
Yeah, so I was glad to hear that, I guess, uh, given the current state of uh, where the stock market's been over the last couple of months. So, yeah, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing no hands raised, we move on to our next item, item E. Uh, policy governance three point four annual review agenda planning.
This is for your own consideration. This is a policy that the board, that, that applies to the board itself. Again, there's some sub policies to it, but it, at the highest level, the first statement of the policy says to. Accomplish its job products with a governance style consistent with board policies, the board will follow an annual, an annual agenda. Which A completes a reexploration of ends. Annually. And B continually improves board performance through board education. And enriched input and deliberation. So that's for the, the board to consider. I. Uh, if, if it's helpful, the, the board. As a whole. I can't recall all the different individuals, but you all go through and have. Uh, gone through different levels of training. You, you go to conferences. I, I know because I, I helped get you. Registered for that. We do review the ends policies annually. We did that in nineteen. May or may not recall it. So I'll turn it back over to the board.
All right, discussion.
I, I guess if I may jump in here.
Go ahead.
I, I had something for um, that I was gonna do for final board comment, but I think it can apply here too. If, if you look at our ends. Number three and four, this is on page one nineteen, uh, safety and health. And, you know, all of our thoughts right now are with so many of our uh, our neighbors and with the pandemic. And last meeting at the end during final board comment, I, I challenged this board. I said, help me think of. Let's think of ideas on how we can help our small businesses and our, our residents. And uh, I came up with an idea, so I want to at least. Broach that because it to, to me goes after ends three and four. And what we see happening across not just our country, but I guess across the world. Is. People that are put in a position of uh, being unemployed and seeking work because. They can't meet the bills. They can't afford the utilities, they can't afford rent, they can't afford food. Um, and they're put in that bad spot where they have to choose between their own health. Or risking their own health, health, or risking the health of their community. And jobs, right? And one of the actions that um, you know, our federal and state governments begun to take. Is looking at ways for those that are in need, and I want to qualify that, those that are direly in need. That we don't put them in that position where they become a health hazard to our community because they feel the need to go look for work. When it may not be safe to do so. And one way to maybe help, so I just, I want to pose this idea so that you can think about it. Uh, and this again regarding safety and health. Is can we set up a program for those that have found themselves unemployed or not making ends meet? Can we help them by waiving late fees on sewer and water? Um, because that, that's our primary fee structure right now that for residents. We, we don't have a lot of latitude with the taxes. We're just one percent or one mil. Um, but we do have an ability to maybe help them with the utilities. And so I want to pose the idea here to this board that. Maybe we can come up with a program that helps some of those that are in the most dire needs so that they're not in a position where they have to go out. Um, where they feel it's not safe. And I'll leave it at that.
I guess hardest part there, Brian, is criteria.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just an idea and um. Yep, I agree.
Uh, can I comment on that a second?
Sure.
Uh, just so you know. A, a couple of things that relates to that. Uh, one, there's the executive order. We're, we're, we're not shutting off anybody's water. Well, we're not allowed to do that per the executive order. And as it relates to interest and penalties, and I thought I'd mentioned this, maybe I didn't. But. We sent out bills in early March, I think.
End of March.
End of March. And there's a due date in May.
May fifth.
The fifth. And we will not be running the interest and penalty routine on those bills. And so, I mean, we've already, and I thought I'd mentioned that. If I didn't, I apologize. So we're not doing that in. In this current billing cycle. The next billing cycle. Is a little bit further down the road. You know, we do the quarterly billing. We don't do the monthly billing. So I just wanted to, to point that out since you brought it up.
It, is, is this um, because of executive order at the state level, or is this a decision of uh, township administration?
The not accruing interest and penalties was uh, the administration. I mean, I, I made that. I instructed the water department not to do that in consultation with that department. We made that decision before the executive order. The executive order only applies to shut offs.
So are the, those that have been billed, are they aware of that policy through their billing or?
Uh, no.
Okay.
It, we just will not run the routine that accrues the penalties.
Fair enough.
On the original bill. The, the way the original bill structured, and it's just an example. You know, it, it may say the amount due is a hundred dollars, not paid by X date. It would say pay a hundred and ten dollars. The original bill still had that type of statement. But since we're not accruing the interest and penalties, if they pay the hundred and ten dollars, it'll be a ten dollar credit on their account. To be able to go against their next bill.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other questions, concerns, discussion? All right. Moving on to our last new business item, item F. Two thousand nineteen annual global ends one point one through one point six review.
And so this is uh. This is maybe one of the most important reports of the year. It does several things. It speaks to whether or not. From the administration's perspective. Were. Complying with and adhering to trying to advance and. That you all have um. Articulated and you, you, you do that articulation once a year. This, you do that, one, three, six, and all the various sub. Those are the primary driver. That, that in essence directs all the activities of, of the administration. Focus one way or the other. Sometimes it's not always easy to draw a direct line, but I can help you draw uh, an indirect line if needed. The goal is to focus all our efforts on advancing the achievement of these ends. And so every year, uh, the, the policy document. Does to review how we have done against that. Policy. And the report that you have in front of you that is rather lengthy. But it contains a lot of, I think, good information. We have it broken down by particular policies. So you'll see a bunch of things listed under. Just the general top line policy of. Community well-being and common good. And that's. One. And then there's, you know, one point one, point one, one point, one point. One point one. The law way goes into some level of detail. As you've articulated your policies. And so then we begin to insert. Activities and accomplishments that we. Did throughout the prior year into an appropriate, what we think is an appropriate place to put it. And. I am. I am not going to go through it all. It is pretty uh, it's pretty long. You know, I think it's probably thirteen or fourteen pages. I would like to go over it at some point, maybe. Uh, it's kind of late in the day, but. It is in your agenda pack and I'm just, I'm not going to sit here and read. Say something that. That you can read. The other thing this does is this kind of kicks off the. The, the cycle. So we've gotten a review last year. And we're going to then be starting to talk about your ends and if there's any adjustments needed. As we begin to prepare for the twenty twenty one fiscal year. But we'll be having some discussions. As it relates to confirming your twenty twenty. And just like we did last year, it'll be coming up in the uh, later part of the spring. So I'll turn it back over to the board.
All right, discussion?
Oh, sorry.
I didn't have your hand up.
There's no blue fingers there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, looking over that, I mean, we don't need to do all that tonight because we have a lot of other stuff on our agenda. But. It's very impressive what we as a board and with, along with the management and staff have accomplished. This is one year that that's accounting for, and you know, we've been together now since nineteen, since twenty sixteen. And uh. I'm, I'm always impressed with, with what we have done over the years, uh, meeting those goals for the community. And uh, when you see something like this, thirteen pages long, you see those accomplishments. It's uh, kudos to all of us. Uh, I think we've done a good job. So. Thank you. Thank you.
Brian, did you want to jump in?
Well, I I guess I just had a a question. It's kind of related to this. I mean, one of the, one of the tasks that the township has done every year for the past few years. Um related to our community is the net uh annual cleanup day. And I was just curious uh with the state of current affairs, um. What uh our manager was thinking about that. I'm not sure if that's going to work this year, and I didn't know if he had plans at this point.
Uh we we had plans to hold it on a specific date, and we were all set to go with our vendors and the landlord being CMU. Uh and then uh COVID came along. And so we're not going to be able to hold it on our originally scheduled date. There's some policy that. Relates to CMU property that's in effect right now. Uh we are in discussions with them and have alerted the vendors. What we're trying to do is is see if we can get it scheduled for a time later in the year. But it's still up near right now.
That that's, that was my hope exactly, so thank you for that.
Who's who's taking returnables?
On that, Mark, could you make sure it's not a rainy day?
Sure, I'll do that.
All right, any more discussion? Seeing no blue hands up. Uh we're out of new business and into. Item eleven on the agenda, extended public comment. This is going to be restricted to five minutes. This will be regarding any issue, and again, this will not be a question and answer. Time, it will be just strictly uh to address concerns to the board. We have anyone that would like to come forward for open or for extended public comment? Uh um I see uh the the be more, the thumb up, i- it is, I'm guessing they want to talk.
I don't see that. I don't see the hand, but I I can uh.
They have like a a yellow thumb up.
Yeah. Soon as I find him, I'll unmute him. Be more, be more. Okay, gotcha. Yes, sir.
There we go.
Hi, how are you? I just wanted to say uh that I felt that decision weighed heavy, and I do understand. That you're all people, and I'm not uh looking to demonize anyone. But. The floods of messages that I get is um um why that page is there. It's not to amplify my voice or my feelings. It's to amplify. People of your township that either don't feel comfortable putting their name on such a thing. Uh so they post it, or they send it as a private message. And that's why those things are there. And. I just wanted to have open communication from our standpoint. And. The issues that we brought up, I felt were addressed by the ordinance. And that's why I I felt. That it was going to be an easier decision than it was, but. Uh there's a lot of money on the table, like was described. But I don't know if it it. Six hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. A million dollars is a lot of money when you're talking about the value of someone's home. And a and a percentage of that for for. For as many people that could be affected by this um. I I don't know if if that was thought about as much. I don't know if you if you gave that any thought. And so I just wanted to make that point, but I really do appreciate the time you took. I'm not sure about having any private meetings. That felt a little weird, to be honest. But I do understand you want expert opinion. I just don't know why they couldn't be public and educate everyone. If you're speaking with an attorney, I totally understand that. It's a private session, but uh. It felt very uncomfortable uh to hear you mention. Having private meetings with uh the industry, letting the industry regulate itself. Didn't feel right. But uh we're all people and. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, again, we have extended public comments. This is regarding any issue. And waiting for the blue hands. I'm not seeing anybody, so at this point, we close public comments. And. We move on to uh manager's comments, item twelve.
Thank you. And so the few minutes ago, I was talking about the April twenty ninth meeting, and it it occurred to me. The uh bear with me. The joint meeting is part of your annual meeting schedule that you set at the beginning of the year. It was originally scheduled in September. I asked you to move it to April. Going to coincide with the open house, and you all approved that. But I think uh by by technical rule. The board needs to cancel, should cancel the meeting. Uh you can do that by just not showing up and will not have a quorum. Or there could be a motion made here to cancel the April twenty ninth joint meeting. And then you'd be on, you know, even more solid ground. I know the board often doesn't like to make motions at this point of the night, but. If you don't, that's fine. We'll just won't be a quorum. There won't be a meeting.
Sir Cody.
I'll make a motion to cancel the joint meeting and reschedule for another day. Um come back with a due call.
Motion support. Discussion? Right, and and clerk code, if you could, if you could get closer to your device and say that again, because it was very difficult to hear.
Um I'll make a motion to cancel the joint meeting. I don't know the day.
The twenty ninth.
Uh twenty ninth and have a due to pull to reschedule the meeting.
I'll still support it.
Okay, so motion support, this would be to um suspend the uh. April twenty ninth meeting or cancel. You want to use different terminology, cancel or suspend?
Cancel it.
Cancel it, okay. So this would be cancelling the April twenty ninth meeting, the joint meeting of the uh trustees, planning commission, zoning board of appeals, correct? And uh this would be again a roll call vote?
The raiser game?
Yes.
Treasure Rice?
Yes.
Trusty Worley?
Yes.
Trusty Help?
Yes.
Trusty Lannan?
Yes.
Trusty Milky?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes?
All right, meeting is canceled on the twenty ninth, so that is free up to twenty ninth for us.
Thank you. And then my last comment, uh it it you all received also the copy of the uh township assessor's uh. Resignation announcement or retirement uh letter, I think probably be more accurate. As was mentioned earlier in the meeting by one of you, I too want to uh congratulate her on her. Uh years of service. For the organization, specifically Union Township, more broadly to the assessing. Community throughout the state. She was very active over the years in her association and took uh leadership. Positions on that board, the um Michigan Township Assessors Association. Has uh worked in several communities during her career across the state. And I guess it's been a real asset to the. To the field and the profession. The uh. I've I've had a conversation with Mr. Priest. Her last day is announced is a week from this Friday. The willingness to stay on a little bit longer needed. Um to help with a transition. And likely to take her up on that offer, I'm not sure how long it would be. As quickly as possible to, you know, move this thing along. I have started developing some paperwork and a process to. Try to find a replacement. I'm going down two paths concurrently. Wanted a. An employment recruitment. Process, trying to, you know, find a. An assessor that we can bring in, W two. I'm also, at the same time, and even in the same document. Uh allowing for the opportunity that somebody could submit a proposal to provide those services. Via a contractual arrangement. And so I want to explore both of those. There may be a need. I'll just tell you right now, there may be a need. Uh to bring somebody or some firm in contractually. Um so I don't think we can go without an assessor for very long. There are routes, there are often monthly reports that are due to. The tax commissions or county equalization departments. You know, those those kind of things still need to be made. For still being being done. I just want to let you know that uh we've actively begun that process. And I'll keep you informed along the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, um. Moving on from item twelve to manager's comments to item thirteen, final board member comments. Um I'm going to go around the horn from my vantage point, and that would start with um Treasurer Rice.
None tonight.
Okay. Trusty Milky.
Everybody stay healthy.
Yeah.
Trusty Lannan.
Yes, thank you. I uh do have a board report that or a comment that I'd like to make um. I guess I'd like to assign us all some homework. Since my degree is in education, and if we're at home and have some time. To take some time, I'd ask us all to take some time. Before we meet again at our special meeting that we're gonna decide on. And. Look at and read carefully from our Union Township Board Policy Manual, which we generally refer to. As policy governance. And that was the last item on our agenda, our ends global statement. I think it'd be a good time to reread, refresh, and in conjunction with that. Look at the justification Mark provided us, the things that we've done over the year to set our minds and thoughts about. Moving forward and setting our new ends and uh goals as we move forward. So that's the first part of the homework. The second part, I'd uh suggest that we all open our master list. And kind of review again what our priorities, our desires as uh. Township Board members have been. I just opened the page to uh a spot in the master list and. Uh three things I see that jump out at us that were goals that we we set. Was to promote collaborative efforts among municipalities and agencies. Uh establish and promote non-motorized transportation. Uh to prevent premature conversion of agricultural. Land to non-farm development. And there's all kinds of great things that uh. May slip our minds if we don't open our master plan and review. So if you could find the time to. Peruse through the master plan and our uh end's global statement, one point zero policy governance. I think that'd be a benefit to all of us and uh promote some good conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Lannan. Trusty Help?
Yeah, I said one thing. I don't know how this is going along. Um. Building official. I don't know what we can do, but I've had. Many people from that, many businesses from that industry. Tell me how much they like our current building official. I just wish we could keep him on somehow as a full-time employee. I realized that. He's under contract with McKenna. I didn't know if there's any kind of buyout he has, if we'd be interested in helping him out with that. I'm not sure, but he's very well-liked. He's done a great job. I know the county officials liking. So. I don't know what we can do, but I just know, I mean, I've had a couple builders say that they were going to put a petition together. But I told them I don't know if that'd do any good because he's under contract with the. With McKenna, so. Anyways, that's my final board comment.
And if if the supervisor would allow me, just because somewhat, I think, a current topic. Um we we we, of course, did post that position. I believe the uh. Cut-off date was the end of March. And Rodney, just give me a nod if that's right.
Uh it's actually the twenty-third of this month.
Okay, twenty-third of April. So it's, you know, so we're going through that process. I have not seen, and I don't think Rodney has either, any of the people that have have applied. I don't know if uh. If the current official has applied or not. Um I wouldn't be surprised if he did apply. I have not looked at the contract. It also wouldn't surprise me, surprise me if there's not some sort of clause in there.
Yeah.
But related, and this is why I wanted to step in. With with the stay-at-home order, and I know that's got to be loosened up at some point. And it also relates to the finances. We're we're going to need to make uh a decision and. Give some thought to, is this the right time to bring in a. Full-time W two building official right now? Or do we kind of maintain our status quo a little longer till business picks up? Because all these builders are also, you know, really not doing much. We've been talking about that situation. We we don't have any answers yet. But right now with with all the uh. Township closed and and the critical workers. We have the current building official working seven hours a week.
Yeah.
And that has been sufficient for the activity that's out in the field. So that gives you a sense of. The volume right now. And. So we were actively working in that situation, and we have some decisions to make. Just to see what would get us, what what makes most sense to get us through till activity picks up again.
That happens this year. I don't know if it will happen this year.
But since brought up, I want to give you a quick update on that subject.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Jar?
Yeah, thanks, Ben. Um yeah, I'd like to. Um, yeah, I'd like to take a few moments to talk with the board. Uh, by now, I assume you all know that I made the decision, um, not to, uh, reelection in the fall. And I'd like to talk a little bit about that. Um, it wasn't an easy decision, because I really do enjoy working with you folks, and I think we've accomplished a whole lot together. And I will feel proud of our accomplishments. But by the time, um, my term is over, I will have served, uh, Union Township. Um, had the opportunity to serve Union Township for the past six and a half years as a member on the Planning Commission, on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and also now as a Board of Trustees member. And I just feel like now is the time to, uh, pass the torch to, uh, other specifically minded, uh, residents um, to come aboard, and I was glad to see, uh, that there was a good number of people that were applying for the trustee position. The, the current pandemic, um, has really been a common reflection, I think, of all of us. And I think it's a key to reevaluating, um, your value, uh, your priorities and, uh, things basically that are, uh, important, you know, to each of us. And, uh, first and foremost, you know, spending time with, uh, my wife, uh, my family, um, with my friends. Um, I have three lovely granddaughters, uh, this is kind of my life that I want to take advantage of, of that opportunity. Um, I think the shelter in place and the, uh, the physical distancing has made that value even that much more apparent, um, to all of us. There's a saying that the greatest gift that we can give to one another is our presence. Um, and that will be remembered and cherished for a long time. So that's one part of it. As you know, uh, we like to travel, um, and we like experiencing, uh, different cultures. I think cultural diversity, um, is, it not only enriches us, but cultural diversity has been a melting pot for the foundation of our American heritage. And so having an opportunity to visit other cultures and bringing that home has been important to us. And lastly, I just, uh, want to continue to seek out opportunities and projects um, in which I can make a difference in the lives of others, in their safety, in their wellbeing, you know, et cetera. Mother Teresa, um, now Saint Teresa, um, was often heard saying, go forth to serve and do many, many little things with lots of love in order to improve the lives of others. And that's been my mantra for as long as I can remember. And so leaving the board is, you know, hopefully going to open up other opportunities as well for them. This pandemic, you know, will eventually be resolved. And what I said in the poem last time was that when the pandemic is, is resolved, the earth will heal. And as it does, its people will heal. And hopefully we can all go back to the life that we knew before this. Sure, there's going to be changes, and there may be a new normal, but hopefully we can begin to restore some of those things that were so meaningful to us. So in conclusion, I just want to say to the board that I want to assure you that, um, for the board and for the township residents, that I will continue to serve as vigorously and diligently um, in the remaining six months of my term, as I've done for the first three and a half years, um, throughout. Uh, so in that regard, you're, you're not done with me yet. And I also want to say thank you to, to the board for a very worthwhile journey that I've been on with you and to allowing me to be a part of that journey, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Norm. Um, two things, um, I just wanted to clarify. I, I, we had a public comment there at the end where I thought maybe, uh, was slight, slight bit of confusion on, on the person's part, is that, uh, the closed session is to discuss with our legal representation. And this is also with any meeting that we call, there has to be an open dialogue, correct? We can't just have a closed session meeting, we have to have a meeting with the ability of the public to have public comment. And let me, let me verify that I'm being correct in that statement.
You're correct.
Okay, so I think that there was a little confusion on, on, on that individual's part is that, um, you know, we're not excluding anyone. Um, the other thing is, um, you know, much like Norm was talking about retiring from, from, you know, Union Township's board, I, 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 I feel, um, so happy for, uh, Pat Priest. Is that, um, she's got a beautiful home, um, just off Lake Michigan. Um, for fifteen years, much, much to my dismay, because I, I, I can't believe that she did, did it, is that she trudged back here every week to work, leaving, leaving that home. Um, and worked tirelessly. Um, uh, I know that she loves her taxpayers, and this was a very difficult thing for her to do, but it was in her mind the right time to do it. Um, I think she's, uh, comfortable with the decision that she made. Um, I think that, um, she's excited about the prospect of being able to do, um, a lot of the fun things that she hasn't had the time to do. So, uh, I want to give, uh, you know, Pat a, a big pat on the back. Um, I really appreciate her, I've gotten to know her very well, and, um, I think she's done a fabulous job. So, um, beyond that, um, I don't have anything else, and we probably need to have a motion to adjourn.
Can I really quick?
Yes.
Um, couple things, one, I, I did want to say thank you to Pat as well. Um, I've gotten to, to work with her, um, and that, and, and she, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm so happy that she gets to spend time with her family like she's been wanting to do, so. She'll be missed and, um, everything, and I, I, I really hope she gets to enjoy that time with her family that she's been really wanting, um, and that, so there is that. And I also, Lisa got booted from the meeting again. And so she wanted me to, um, her, her computer started making high buzzing, squealing and, and crazy noises. So, um, she just wanted to say thank you to Pat, um, as well for, um, all that she's done and, um, and, and hopefully everybody stays safe, so that, that's her notes to me, so. The, the, the last little bit there is from Lisa, so.
And again, we've got to review these Surface Pro things.
Well, I think she actually has my old one that was starting to have issues anyway.
Yeah, all right.
It, it may be that one, I'm not sure.
I like the good old fashioned B C. No problems. All right, so we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, second. Okay, and, uh, without the clerk here, uh, I don't believe we need to have really a, a, a roll call on this, we'll just raise our hands. All in favor? Aye. Aye. See you next time.